All right, good afternoon. Special City Council Workshop, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, August 8th. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Nicole, you want to do roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Gosian?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn? Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Popsen?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item, citizens' comments.
Mr. Claus?
Good afternoon. Al Claus, Three Grand Pavilion, Meeting Number 19 regarding the noise ordinance and a nuisance. Requesting for the 13th time that we get written assurances regarding enforcement of 925 BC, Amplified Music. The resort's sound monitoring executive summary dated July of '23. As Rusty My Man on the Street said, quote, "We all know what it is going to tell us," unquote. Questions: What is the reason for not receiving the full report as previously requested by Mr. Pierce, Mr. Ward, and others? What is the reason the executive summary is not in the council's packet? What is the reason this is not on the agenda? Where is Mrs. Hack, the absentee manager of the resort? Lastly, did the sound study engineers electronically tag the cicadas and crows for future reference? This summary is a sound study, a recipe for sound and disaster, not a sound abatement study which we requested to Mrs. Hack in November of '22. Interestingly, this demonstrates the resort was not at all interested in abating sound, only wants to generate more of it, legally this time. Actually, we previously provided you a sound study dated 4/13/22. We asked Mrs. Anderson, chairperson of Public Safety Committee, what can you do for us? Her response, we will give back to you. Never did. Yes, that's right, our sound study. The resort has violated the current noise ordinance since March of '21. They are obnoxious, arrogant, disruptive, and a major nuisance which has grossly violated our livability. This administration has allowed the nuisance to prevail with lack of enforcement. That's our executive summary. For the full study, please refer to our previous 18 presentations, which are on the IOP YouTube channel. Perspective: This room is approximately 32 feet wide and 39 feet deep. Diagonally from that corner to that corner is 50 feet. Again, these are approximate measurements. From the wall behind Mrs. D to this podium is 25 feet. That is the distance between the resort and Mrs. Williamson's property, 1657th Avenue. 25 feet, that's the distance. From that corner out into the hallway is 62 feet. Our property, GP3, is 62 feet from the resort. Just trying to put things in perspective. Plus, we are fronting the entire noise. We get it first. May 22 of '18, resort represented they would follow all IOP noise ordinances. They have not. The resort's mentality, build it and they will forget what we said, must stop yesterday.
Mr. Claus?
Accountability, accountability, accountability. Folks, we cannot continue to let the tail wag the dog. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is special presentations. This is a presentation of options for the new city logo. Desiree, you want to provide a little background on kind of what we're doing tonight?
Yes, absolutely. As you all know, the city adopted a strategic plan a couple of years ago, and the number two priority listed in the strategic plan was for the city to develop an effective, timely, and efficient communications plan. This is just one step and one piece of that, our efforts at developing a communication strategy for the city. We believe that this is an opportunity for the city to develop a new logo. We don't have one, other than the city seal, that is going to help us as we start pursuing a new brand for Ala Palms. We believe that having a logo that is consistent, that reflects the city's strategic plan, reflects the city's mission and vision, as are included in the strategic plan, is essential for the city to develop a brand and for it to be a visual representation of what the city is and wants to be and who it wants to attract. So, we have engaged Andrew Barton. He is familiar with, we're familiar with his work. He has done some work for the town of Mount Pleasant that we really liked. So, we reached out to him and asked him to help us develop a new logo for the city. We're not yet complete. We're at a point where we're going to get feedback from the council so that we make sure that we're on the right track and incorporate any thoughts that you may have on this matter. I think that's it. I'll introduce Andrew. I think he has a presentation that we're going to walk through and hopefully get some good feedback from this group. Andrew?
Ready?
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Andrew Barton. Privileged to be here to present to you guys today. I'm just going to quickly run through a little bit about myself very quickly, and then we'll look at the two concepts we've honed in on while going through this process. So, presentation, are you ready? All right, so that's me. That's an illustration of me. I've been in the Low Country for 15 years. I've been, for 13 years, I've had my own independent design studio, and I was briefly a resident of Ala Palms, and it was the most wonderful three months that I've had in quite a while. I do plan to come back at some point. I love Ala Palms. It is definitely my beach of choice, and I was very thrilled to have this opportunity to help you guys out. So, I have quite a bit of experience as a designer. I love doing print work, design, illustrations, logos, illustrations that are for more corporate or more playful. And I just wanted to let you know some of my previous clients that I've worked for in the area, some names that you probably recognize. And so, let's roll on to the presentation here. When we first started meeting, we discussed on the left side here, you'll see sort of the key concepts that we wanted to capture in the logo. Obviously, Palms are a big part of the story out here on the island. It's fun. We want the logo to reflect some elegance. We want it to be family-friendly, cherished, and welcoming. So, those are the concepts that were applied to Ala Palms. On the right are the goals, the technical goals for the logo. It needs to be readable, it needs to be very authentic to the island and what it stands for. It needs to be modular. By that, I mean you need to be able to take the icon and use it, you know, in a social media profile pic. You need to be able to take the text and use it in your email signature. You just need to be able to break it up into different pieces according to where it needs to be used in marketing and representing the city. One of my goals is definitely to keep things simple and clean. It needs to be unique. And then, it should be timeless, should last for a good long while. So, those are my internal objectives for coming up with the logo. All right, so I just wanted to go quickly through the process, my process for coming up with the logo. This slide, hopefully it's not too confusing, but if you just look at the top, the top row, it kind of shows the three stages of logo development for my process. So, in example one, first I'll start with some black and white concepts. And typically, I do start with the icon of the logo, and by icon, I mean sort of the little graphic element that is on the logo, you know, like the Target Mark or the Apple for Apple computers. And I'll do it in black and white just to make sure it looks good in one color and that you've nailed the, we've nailed the concept and achieved some of those objectives from before. Then, for the second round, we'll move to color. Color can be confusing if introduced too early because it elicits, you know, emotional reactions, one way or the other, and can be a little distracting. So, that's why I like to wait till the second phase to go into color. And then finally, after that, we sort of narrow down on one of the concepts and finalize it, putting it all together. So, that's sort of a high-level version of the process, and these are two different logos that I've worked on, just to kind of show you how it goes. It's pretty straightforward. Are there any questions before I move forward? Okay. All right, so for this particular presentation, we are in, we're in the black and white zone here. We're still looking at first, the first round of concepts, and I've got two concepts to show you today. Option one.
Mr.?
So, as I said, it's in black and white. We've got, the icon is palm trees, and then I really wanted to use a nice script for the island. And I just put it, I mocked it up on some, over some images on the right so you could kind of see what it might look like, broken down, you know, into different parts and used in different places. Of course, the final version will be in color. We're just not there yet. And I like to, like I said, put it on different applications so you can kind of get a feel, sort of a gut feel, of what it might, what it might look like at the end of the process. And I know that in a municipal setting, there are some very practical applications you have to keep in mind, like the street signs, you know, the size of vehicle, city vehicles, something like that, maybe even an app. And that's option one. So, now I'd like to show you option two. Option two, in option two, I tried to capture what it feels like to drive down the Palm Island, Palm Avenue.
Palm Boulevard.
Palm Boulevard. I did live here, 34th Avenue. I said all my passwords. I'll put that on the internet. So, same deal. It was in the same, applied to the same images, so you can kind of see how that would break down. And you can see on the, on the street sign that the logo has to be modular, and we have to sort of modify it a little bit within a system to make it work on all the different applications. All right. I'm going to show them together here, just to give you an idea. So, top to bottom, so the top row is, you know, it's different because it says "city of" at the top, so that might be the version you use on more official documents. The middle row, you know, for an advertisement for the island, maybe that's the tourist version that you show. It doesn't have to say "city of" because people kind of get it. And then, if there's ever a time when you just want to use the icon or just the text, then you would use the bottom row. So, definitely trying to come up with a system, an identity, logo identity system that will work for you guys. I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, please do.
Can you take, mix and match from the two?
Sure, sure. I'm here to serve.
I mean, I just, like, for discussion's sake, if there's things that we like about, you know, option one versus option two, or does that?
No, it's fine.
Do you think that wouldn't be good?
Well, I think it's worth trying. So, I've definitely been, definitely done that before. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, so I'm definitely open to your feedback.
And that's, Ms. Myers, that's what we want to hear, you know? Is there anything in particular that you, you know, like and reacted well to and want, so that we can, rather than going down a path, we wanted to just hear what you all, what your reaction would be?
Is there a particular element you'd like to combine?
I mean, just to get the conversation going, I really like the look of the second palm trees, but I like the orientation of the first.
The orientation?
I like the way that they're staggered, you know?
Okay, yeah, that's great. Thank you. The second, on the second one, the palm trees, the palm trees feel more like real trees.
Yeah, I think that's what I liked.
And that's a good thing, in your mind?
Yes.
Jan?
I'd just like to say, the first one, to me, is more dynamic. There's something about it that just makes it, to me, more, much more appealing, and the second one is more static, I think. It's, you know, it's fine on a, on a piece of paper. The palm trees, I think, could be either way, but I guess it's the script that you're using on the left-hand side in particular that gives it that oomph.
Okay. Oomph, how do you spell oomph?
Technical.
I agree with you. I like that, I like that font a lot. It's a great one.
As a parent of 14 and younger children, they don't read cursive.
Yep.
Which is, I'm ashamed to say it, like, it's terrible, but they don't.
Well, Katie, I was going to make the same comment for our 30-year-olds. I mean, if they never practice it, they don't write it.
My mom still writes them letters in cursive, and I have to read them for her.
I mean, I like, I like the first one. Jan, I think to your point, I'm more drawn to it, but I think if you're trying to get something timeless, script doesn't do it.
I think maybe we need a more dynamic font that is not cursive, I guess is what we're saying.
Well, I would like to ask a question, maybe a rhetorical question, but is everyone here familiar with the Kiowa logo?
Yeah.
It's a beautiful logo. It's a script.
Yeah. But it's, I mean, I think Councilperson Meyer's statement is clear. They don't teach script in school anymore.
I'm not going to throw my children under the bus reading.
So, if we wanted to be timeless, we've eliminated the bottom half of the population. Yeah. I guess my other question was just, I really would like to know how this fits into what I call a rebranding of the island, how it would fit in with everything else that we're planning to do. So, I'm not sure whether we're jumping the gun by having this done first without a marketing plan, at least the beginnings of it in place.
Well, this is meant to reflect the mission and vision from the strategic plan.
Right.
That has already been, you know, sort of established as a guiding principle, not only from, from a policy perspective, but also for marketing, and that's work that we're doing with the CBB. This will flow that. This is sort of that first step of just, how do we, how do we differentiate IOP within, in a logo compared to all other communities? So, I think that will come. It's part of, it's part of the entire process. We just, we have to start somewhere.
Yeah, and I just, I think one of the things that you said that really struck me as a positive is being able to take pieces of it and put it, use it in different places because I've, in the little bit of work that I've done with logos and selling things, it's a nightmare when you can't get, you know, you have a logo and it doesn't fit in the box that you're trying to fit it in. So, I think that's an awesome, you know, so we'd be able to have something that we can use and move to different platforms.
And we have nothing today. All we, all we have is the city seal that we try to play around, you know? We can't really do much of it, but we don't have a logo. So, I think this is sort of the first, the first step in creating that identity for the city that we could use to work on the branding, what that looks like for the city.
I guess, uh... Go ahead, John.
I guess just speaking out loud, I don't, I don't know if I have a preference on one or the other, but if I look at some of the criteria you put up there earlier, I guess the one on the left looks more fun, the one on the right looks more elegant. I guess important to me on this branding was family, this family-friendly. I don't know if either one necessarily brings out that to me, but I certainly think that was a key, for me, a key criterion, our rebranding. But just a few comments, so again, I don't know if I have a preference either way, but it's just, those are the things that kind of stuck out for me.
Thank you.
And Andrew, did you look at, kind of to John's point, something other than palm trees, something where there are other versions? I'm sure you guys have already discarded out, get to here.
The short answer is no.
Okay. That was kind of your theme, Will.
That was sort of the specs that the job came up with, yeah. And it's in the name, and it seemed, seemed like it would be a little odd to put something else there, you know? Not impossible.
No, I was just asking.
And anything more than palms would make it cluttered, I'm guessing?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. I mean, I will say that a challenge with this logo was putting more than one palm. A lot of logos just have one palm. And if you have two, it seemed like three was a good number, three or an odd number of palm trees.
So, easier said than done, but back to the fun part. Is there a way of adding some kind of water element to the logo?
Yes.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Yes.
And looking at...
Definitely require some more.
Yeah. And looking at some of the other towns that are around here, I mean, most of them do seem to have, instead of the script, they seem to have, you know, block lettering or whatever you want to call it, but they have it in a, in a font that's much more attractive than just what we have here on the right, whether it be Edisto Beach, Mount Pleasant, Folly Beach. And all of them do seem to have, what I can tell, other than Mount Pleasant, they have some reference to water in their logo, you know? Mount Pleasant has obviously the Cooper River Bridge in the background, the spires or whatever. But to me, the one on the right is just too plain, basically, maybe a good start, but I would suggest that we, you know, don't want to be like everybody else, but on the other hand, too, it looks like there are some town and city left on a quick surge here.
And Andrew, would that possibly come in with color? The water element, or not necessarily?
Well, I envision the whole, everything to be in color. You would only use a black, you'd only see this logo in black.
I know, I'm just trying to get to...
On fax paper.
That comment specifically, if, you know, instead of another design or whatever, could you?
Now, what I, I guess this is a question for Desiree, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, but the city's seal, would that, would that remain the same, the official seal?
Yes, yes.
That would, that would mean that this is only for marketing purposes, that sort of thing that we're talking about.
Our social, the website, we would still use the seal in formal.
Right, right. That has our date of incorporation on it, has our motto, that sort of thing.
Yeah, we're not replacing the seal. This is not a replacement of the seal.
Just wanted to be clear on that and have that on the record here.
Yes, absolutely.
In case anybody's listening that thinks that's what we were going to do.
No.
Okay.
So, we hear some wanting to see a water element considered and maybe a different font rather than a script. We can certainly take your feedback, take it back, and maybe develop other options for you all to look at.
I would just like to say, we could probably get a water element in there with color. I mean, if we just use color instead. I like the simplicity of what you've got up there now. You put too much in a logo and you lose it. The Mount Pleasant one looks a little busy because it has too much going on in its logo. But they do have a, I think if you just take a regular script and, and just put it in italics, you'll get the same effect as if it were longhand instead of just the printing. But you know better than me what, what the options are with, with the kinds of scripts you can use. And then, I think we can always add other elements depending, like you showed with your images, depending upon the image with a water feature for some of our advertising and stuff, but not necessarily. This would just be, I think, the starting point is what I'm looking at this as. This is the one that you could use on a letterhead or, yeah, like on the street sign like you showed or something like that. You wouldn't want a whole bunch of busy stuff going on.
Yes, ma'am, definitely. I definitely try to keep the core of the logo very simple.
Yeah.
All right. Andrew, you have what you need?
I do, I do. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for your help.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Desiree, anything else on that?
No, sir. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew, very much. Next item, Dashboard of City Operations. This is in your packet, Desiree.
All right. So, we are one month into the FY24 fiscal year. So, when you look at revenues and expenses, most of, very little activity, and we'll hear more detail when we go to the financial statements, but most of the revenues that were collected in July accrue to FY23 and not, are not reflected in the data below. So, again, very little activity for FY24 budget. Police Department charges and actions for calendar year-to-date, 2023, so seven months into the, into this calendar year. Police Department has responded to 6,383 calls for service, much higher than 2021 and 2022. You can see that parking stops and parking citations are trending ahead of 2022. For our municipal court dockets, these are the number of cases that are handled through our court for traffic and criminal cases. These numbers do not include parking, parking citations that are presented to the court. But you can see that for the month of July, we've almost, we've doubled the number of cases from 150 roughly to over 300 this, this month. For the Fire Department, 256 calls for service. You received an updated monthly report earlier today from both police and fire, but just wanted to highlight that of those 256, 96 calls were related to, were EMS calls. The month of July, there were 13 calls where we received aid from the town of Mount Pleasant as part of our automatic aid. I'm sorry, we gave, we provided aid to 13 calls and received aid in 24 of our calls the month of July. No significant changes in public works, garbage, and yard debris, slightly less than 2021 and 2022. Building Department, here you can see our current count as of August 3rd on the short-term rental that have been issued by the city. We sent out an updated count earlier today, and just for the record, I'll just say that as of a couple hours ago, this changes every hour, we have issued 1767 licenses, and then there are 32 that are either pending, pending, somebody has applied but have not yet either paid the invoice, or there's some documentation that is missing, or have been identified by RentalScape as being active without a rental license, and those will be pursued by code enforcement for compliance. On personnel vacancies, not, not much has changed from last month. We have a police officer vacancy and a communication specialist in the police department, as well as seven BSOs. We still have BSOs, job descriptions out there. We don't anticipate that we're going to, at this point in the, in the year, that we'll hire any new folks, but it's, it's still out there. If applications come in, we'll process them. For the Fire Department, we have four paramedics. I think I reported last month that two have been hired by, by the department, so we're making progress there. And one city seal position open in public works. They've been conducting interviews this week and last week.
Desiree or Chief Cornet, either one, but on the BSOs that we currently have, do we, do we think that our staff that we have on hand right now will be with us through Labor Day for the most part, or will they be dropping off like they have sometimes in the past? Or if we have any idea at all?
We do. We actually keep track of this as much as we can, and we have already started to see the numbers go down. The downside of getting Citadel Cadets is that they typically have to go back early. They're great employees, but they have to go back a little bit earlier. So, we've lost a couple. We have several that this will be there last week, but we'll have a, we'll have about our normal total number will follow us through Labor Day. So, we added more, more this year, doubled it. We'll actually end the season with about the number that we normally would have had throughout the summer. So, that's, we're still in a better position than we normally are at this time of year.
Thank you. I have to say, I think the staff that you put in place with the BSOs this year have been the best that I've seen. I mean, like, they're really on top of things, working hard, you know, and trying to do their best. It looks like they've formed quite a bond among themselves as well.
Yes, sir, they have. We're very impressed with them. So we added more, more this year doubled it. We'll actually end the season with about the number that we normally would have had throughout the summer. So that's, we're still in a better position than we normally are at this time of year.
Thank you. I have to say, I think the staff that you put in place with the BSOs this year have been the best that I've seen. I mean, like they're really on top of things, working hard, you know, and trying to do their best. It looks like they've formed quite a bond among themselves as well.
Yes, sir, they have, we're very impressed with them.
I have a question for the chief. It's, it has to do with a conversation I had with about the community that's at 41st Avenue, the group of homes there. And this was on the golf course. And they were saying that with respect to noise complaints, that they have a lot of problems there with parties. And they said at one point, there were even people jumping off of second story balconies into pools and stuff like that. And they can, they, they take turns calling the police department about it so that it's not just one person complaining. It's multiple people in the community, but they didn't feel like they were being heard. And I'm just wondering, do we show those call responses in our documents now?
They would be in here, without knowing the address before coming in here, I can't give you a clear answer on that specific address. But I do know I went through today and we don't have numerous short-term rentals that have multiple violations. I think when I looked at it today, you had eight short-term rentals that had two founded complaints. And you had one that had three founded complaints. And that's it. The rest all had one.
Okay, so they should be showing up in your monthly reports. And then the other complaint, and I'm not sure you can address this, is that they said when they're calling, it's on the weekends when the livability officer isn't working. Do we need to change the hours that the livability officer works? In other words, maybe they get Sunday, Monday off, not Saturday, Sunday, so that they're there Friday and Saturday nights or whatever? I don't know how we can do that, but is that a problem that you see or is it covered by other officers?
Well, it's covered by other officers, but they currently do work every Saturday. They're off on Sunday and Monday.
Okay, so that is, that's already happening?
But if they're not here, our officers respond and they complete an incident report. Whether it's founded or unfounded, they have to do an incident report so that we're notified and we can follow up. So basically what will happen is that night, if the officer goes out and has a founded complaint, they do an incident report, it gets forwarded to code enforcement. He will then come in and contact the short-term rental owner and tell them, hey, you have another strike. If it requires the rental company to come out, the officer will call them out that night without the code enforcement officer needing to-
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that we're getting accountability for the complaints that we're getting. Because I think council members hear a lot more complaints than maybe you do in terms of, but, you know, we don't know how many it is as a total, because if somebody complains to me, it never gets recorded, you know, that kind of thing.
We find a lot of that, we've actually, we have a redundant reporting system at this point where we are counting these numbers in multiple areas to make sure that it's all lining up. And it, it's accurate to the best of what we're getting called into the police department is what you're seeing in your, your reports.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Scott?
Yep.
I just have one request, if, I think we're going to be into the departmental reports, but over the last couple of months, we've been getting the one-page summary with all of the short-term rental information that has all of the different dwelling units, the counts, the splits between the licenses. I think we're all familiar with the one-page. And it wasn't in the packet this month, and I think it would be helpful so that we keep track of kind of the mix between the four and six percent, the totals, and also have the forward look into what are the pendings and what are the ones that are being identified by RentalScap? It sounds like RentalScap's working out quite well. And I think that would give us a little bit of a forward view. So I'd like to just formally request that the, that gets put back in the packet and that we include it every month.
We can do that.
Yeah, just, Scott, remember the four, six percent split only comes once a year from the county, so I mean, it's not-
No, but we can apply the licenses to those buckets.
Can, yeah.
Yeah, we'd be using the same 2022 dwelling data from the county until we get it, yeah, updated by the county, which we anticipate receiving that in the next few months.
Yeah, we, we did that all last year, I think, so I would be consistent.
Same thing.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
And departmental reports are included in your packet, to Scott's point. Any questions or comments there that haven't been taken care of in the committee?
Are we probably back on track with yard waste pickup?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Desiree. Next item, Strategic Plan Policy Initiatives and Priorities. First is a livability discussion of recommendations from the Planning Commission regarding the city's short-term rental program and related topics. You've got a memo in your packet, Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This, these recommendations are coming in response to council sending, tasking the Planning Commission with looking at certain things that could be done to address livability with short-term rentals. They spent several months looking at those policies and some of these came to them from you. Others, they created on their own and are coming back to you. So I'll, there's four of them in detail and I'll, I'll just go over the, those four and then we can talk a little bit about next steps. Their first recommendation is to limit the occupancy of newly constructed or substantially reconstructed homes or homes that have allowed a license to lapse to no more than eight. Currently, we have a limit of 12 for newly constructed homes, but it doesn't apply to those other, those other situations. So this would be a, a change for us. Second is require a minimum of two-night stays for all rentals except hotels. Third is to require listings to have their license number posted. Fourth, and this is one that you all did not ask that they look at, but they came up with, consider allowing owners to rent a room in their home. This is, this is similar to what the city of Charleston does. They actually only allow it in those situations and they feel like it is a benefit to having the owners onsite. But this is, kind of cuts across how we have traditionally handled zoning in, in single-family homes, but that is a recommendation. So in terms of next steps, we would like to just get kind of a read from council tonight. If you, if you'd like to see these put into draft format. If so, we would, we would have these put into an ordinance. And then that would go through the regular process of a first reading, a public hearing and a second reading. And, and it would go back to Planning Commission in ordinance form for their recommendation as well. Another aspect of this that the, that really the staff, I think, is, has kind of talked internally about is clear definitions in the code as to what constitutes a strike. The Planning Commission had a good conversation with the police chief and the livability officer about how they're viewing that. And I think they're doing a great job and they've made, they've made good judgments as, as to what would constitute a strike and what wouldn't. There's a little bit of anxiety about, you know, if, if five strikes ultimately led to the revocation of a license. We, we realize that's a major, that would be a major impact to that owner. So we anticipate that there could be, you know, there probably would be, there'd be some significant pushback on revocation. So we just would want to be sure that we had the full kind of weight of the law in that, in that situation should it, should it arise. So if you all are agreeable in general terms to the recommendations, we would do, do these four plus look at those definitions of strikes and start working through that. Do you have any questions about any of these?
The strikes would be for-
So right now, the ordinance kind of generally says five violations, five founded complaints results in a rental license being revoked.
Okay, this, this is for short-term rental licenses?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And, you know, the, the example comes up is, just came up. You have a, you have a house that is over the number of cars that can be on-site. The police department has indicated clearly that would be a strike. What if that resident or that visitor goes off-site? They get a ticket off-site, is that a strike? Is it a strike if it's right in front of the house? Is it not a strike if they drive to the front beach, which is four blocks away? So it, you know, would probably add some clarity where there currently is not clarity.
Another example, no violations or trash can violations. Let's say we have a property that for, you know, received five founded complaints related to not bringing their garbage can back at the time that, that we require by code. Would that constitute us initiating a revocation process of a, of a business license? So there's, there's nothing codified. And I just feel like it needs to be codified in order to put the city in the best position to ultimately, if we get to a point where we need to, you know, you all would make a decision about a license being revoked.
So right now, a strike could be anything that's minor up to something very egregious, basically.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And another example is, and I, and I think it's a good policy, so I'm not saying otherwise, but they, the police department has kind of come up with a number of trash can pullbacks that would constitute a strike. And I think it's two or three, you know, times that you didn't pull back your can would be one strike. Probably a very fair, fair policy and, and good way to do it.
So it'd be multiple, minor offense like that, let's just consider that minor. They would, they would have basically two or three different warnings before it would constitute one strike?
Correct. That's the way they're, that's the way they're handling that now, but there's nothing in the code that would kind of give them much backing to, to do it that way.
Is there, is there any language forthcoming at this time about an appeal process?
Yeah, so in, in the event that a, a license is revoked, that comes to this group. So you all will get all the reports, all of the documentation that triggered the revocation hearing. And it'd be very much like a legal hearing where you all would, would take evidence, you'd make a judgment and decide whether or not it warrants revocation or not. You would do that. In the, then, in the event that the council found and revoked a license, there is also an appeals process through the courts.
Right, that wasn't what I, what I mean. I know that we have appealed one license in like the past 10 years for multiple strikes. The question I had was, is there appeal process within the law enforcement agency? Where somebody says that we received, like I received a letter from somebody said there was a misunderstanding about a trash can pullback and that they had got a ticket or a warning when they had clearly, they thought they were within the law. Is there appeal process there before it gets to this body?
So there would be for the citation? I mean, I know that a citation would go to the court and the court would be in appeals process. I think in the example you're giving where they were given a strike and they felt like it wasn't a warranted strike, I think that appeal process would just be administratively with the police department. And then I guess, again, they could plead the case if it was a, if it was an improper strike. They could plead that case to you all and then ultimately to the courts.
That's what the homeowner was stating, that he just went ahead and paid the ticket because he had to get back to work out of state. You know, I was just wondering if there are, in this new proposals, or is there, again, appeal process before that happened?
There's not, there's not anything that changes with these recommendations, but I would say there is kind of an inherent process for dealing with that. And there would be multiple checks along the way that it was a legitimate strike.
Scott?
Yeah, my question is, I wonder if staff or, I don't know, Max, if we're going to be writing up an ordinance, are there other municipalities that have already dealt with this and have re, actually, you know, gone through a revocation process where, it sounds like we're trying to recreate, we're creating the wheel. Whereas I'm guessing some of the other municipalities up and down the coast or nearby have probably already addressed this. And maybe we can, I, I'd be interested in what other communities are doing before we jump into this and see, see what other benchmarks we might be able to find and how they're handling it and how they're working up the ordinance. I think, you know, the, the discussion about handling a minor and a major infraction the same as a strike, I, I think that's worth taking a look at.
And we've looked at other communities and that's one of the, not only finding ourselves at odds with how to deal with particular situations sometimes by looking and doing some research to what other communities have done, we've realized that our ordinance is deficient in that, in that perspective. So yes, there are examples out there that spell it out that we can use as a starting point.
Is there a way for you to summarize maybe what the others are doing compared to what we're doing on a single page or something? So we can at least see kind of where we're sitting up against the other communities?
Yeah, we could do that. The, the plan would be to present that to the Planning Commission for their, for their review and then bringing it back to you all like we, we did with these four. So right now, we're looking for feedback and guidance on the four that are listed, that they've, they've made a formal recommendation. We just wanted to let you all know that that's, that, that other piece is, is being worked right now at the administrative level. And we'll be presenting it to the Planning Commission for their feedback, so more on that. But these four have already been formalized so that we would like to get feedback in direction on how we take this back to the Planning Commission.
And just, just one additional comment. I, I mean, as far as these four go, number three seems to me like it's more of an administrative exercise. And I think that would be one that, you know, we could implement fairly quickly. The other three, I'm just, it might help, I wouldn't mind getting a little more background on how, what the logic was or the thinking behind some of these. And I don't know how we best go about that, but-
So I would just tell you, for what it's worth, my personal opinion is that the number one change is a, is a fairly significant change. And there was a little bit of, I would say that the number being reduced to eight had some resistance in the Planning Commission group. That's ultimately what they decided was eight. So that's a, you know, going from 12 to eight, a significant reduction. And, and I would also say that currently, we, and I think it's kind of out in the community that new houses, and I think the public generally latches on to the idea that new houses are limited to 12 people. We almost, almost every time a larger rental is torn down and it rebuilds, people are shocked when they call us and they say, wait a minute, I'm seeing a new house being allowed to have 20 people. Something's wrong, we've limited that to 12. And we have to explain that the way the ordinance currently works is we go back to a date in 2010 to a list and see what their occupancy was on that date. And if it's more than 12, they're allowed to replace up to that occupancy. So I would say that one is probably the most impactful in kind of a day-to-day-
Is that the grandfathering?
Yes.
Correct.
Do we have a list of all the-
How many properties?
Do we have a list of those properties?
All of them that are grand, all of them that are more than 12.
And what those occupancies are?
The 2010 occupancy is greater than 12?
Yes.
Yes, we have that list.
Okay.
And it's, I mean, it's less than 100, I mean, it's less than 50, I think.
I would think so. Between, I would say, I would guess it's between 50 and 100.
Okay, the only, the only reason I, the only reason I ask on that is because when we looked at, and I know the Granicus were not using that, but there were, as I recall, there were about 150 properties that had advertised occupancy over 12. And if you added up the total of that occupancy, it was over 2,400 people total in those 150 units. So that averaged out about 17 per unit. So we, we might want to get a handle on what actually was grandfathered and was not, because I think the advertised occupancy is quite higher than 50 or 200.
You, you think it's 150?
146 and the number was 2,405 occupants were advertised.
Yeah, I mean, that seems-
But that's significantly over what your thinking is grandfathered.
Well, I would, I'm certainly taking guesses.
We can go back and go back to the list.
But it's a, it's a, it's a longstanding list that we use internally to, to see what those numbers are.
And Douglas, just to practical on this first one. You know, so if I have a four-bedroom house currently, so four times two, that's eight plus two, I'm a 10, right? Current, current numbers.
Correct.
This one feels extremely punitive to me, to what people are currently building, living, expecting. I mean, I think the 12 is a reasonable number personally. This one feels drastic.
So, and I, and I would say, kind of, and you're getting at it, this, this recommendation is twofold. It's reducing from 12 to eight and it's making the pool that it's reducing significantly larger. It's getting at those grandfathered. So, you know, a compromise between the two would be to go with the expansion of the pool to include newly, newly, all newly constructed houses or reconstructed houses regardless of where they sat in 2010. regardless of where they sat in 2010, but you can keep it at 12. I mean, you can kind of split the difference between the two, it's kind of a two-pronged approach.
I think that seems, I think that seems more fair. I mean, if you're, if you're building a new house, you're building a new house, you have to bring it up to code, you have to do all, you know, you have to change all of the things that you would have to change if you tear down a house, you know, setbacks, everything else. So allowing it to keep the same, same occupancy just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, so, but I, I do also think that going from 12 to eight is a big step.
Can I make a recommendation maybe to think about is this is a fairly significant change, I think, so, and I, I think we're missing the, at least I am, I didn't go back and watch the planning commission's discussion on this, but I think we're missing their discussion and their thoughts and why they feel this is important and the kind of, I don't know if it'd be helpful to delay at least this first one until our next workshop and bring the planning commission in and have them have a discussion around this with them, so we can kind of bat around their thoughts and, and get their perspective on it.
You know, we have a joint session early on, probably not a bad idea. I think we're going to have it on more than just the first one personally.
Yeah, at least this one, I mean, we talked about the other one, but I think it'd be worthwhile to get their perspective on why they recommend this.
Scott, would you say?
No, I, I like that idea.
Jan?
I agree with having the planning commission in and I also think that eight, I'd like to find out their logic for that because I think 12 seems like a more reasonable number. The second one where we're talking about a minimum two night stay, we are running into a problem with the condo hotels and the villages at Wild Dunes also operate sort of like condo hotels as well. So knowing that, we need to do something about either differentiating the kind, I know what, I, I think I have an idea of what the planning commission was going for on this, but allowing these entities that we have, that we have fostered for years to continue to operate successfully.
So the, the recommendation excludes hotels?
What about on front beach, the condo hotels, are they, the ones that are condos?
The Palms Hotel that operate like hotels? I would think that they would be excluded.
Those would be excluded, is that, are you saying that you think that that's problematic to exclude them?
No, I didn't know they were excluded.
I think you need to broaden the exclusion.
Okay, and then what about?
Not only a hotel room, but a, if it's kind of a, that was their intent. If it's, if it's being, you know, rented through a hotel organization, that that would be excluded. So the, the hotels in Wild Dunes, the Seagrass Inn, the Boardwalk Inn, all of those in the front, front beach area would be excluded from that.
Okay, and what about?
To really truly be kind of single family homes that would have to comply with this.
Okay, and what about the, the villages at Wild Dunes, the area between the Boardwalk Inns and Seagrass is, I think it's rented out by the, by the hotels there, so I, I mean, it's a technicality, but it's one that, can you check on that?
Yeah, there could be some, yeah, we, seems like there's some gray area there in terms of, is it, is it rented out through the hotel or is it done through their rental agency and you don't know that it's not through the hotel? But we could certainly, I mean, that's, I guess that's the level of detail that we would, if there's agreement with the concept, we'll certainly, you know, work out those finer points with the, with the ordinance, but that's a, that's an excellent point.
Well, another thing to John's point, this is another one to me, because the stated reason, commission believes this could reduce one night party events. I don't know that we have that issue today. I mean, talking to some of the management companies today, they don't allow, single family residents specifically, they don't allow one night rentals. I mean, it's.
Yeah, that, that's my point as well.
It doesn't work.
I, I, if it's, let's just take for a second that they're talking about single family homes. I doubt very, I don't know if we have the numbers, but I doubt very seriously that those are being rented out for one, I, I think probably most of them are three nights, which if you're not going to entertain something that's more than three nights minimum stay, which again is a, is a change, a significant change, then I don't think you're going to get to the point that you're, you're trying to reduce parties. I mean, the three night stays, there's typically bachelor parties, bachelor parties, those kind of things, not the week long family vacations. And I think, so I, I, again, I, I think if we're having them in, I'd be curious to understand their thoughts around how they believe that this would reduce the, the parties, because I doubt very seriously that any single family homes are being rented for one night.
They, they did kind of go back and forth on that issue as to whether, how effective it would be. I, I think that we learned that the example of the really bad party, maybe on 25th, first?
Yeah.
Was a one night rental, but it, that's your point.
That's an exception of all exceptions.
Yeah, it could be, it could be an anomaly and, you know, not.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first off, I agree that we ought to bring the planning commission in. I watched that meeting and it was difficult to follow, basically, the way the conversation was going back and forth and they had a lot of spirited discussion and, you know, it had got, you know, very, I won't say heated, but it got very vigorous at times between all the, all the people that were talking. So I think bringing them in and getting some clarification on some of these things would be great. I look at these four items and really don't have one that just looks straightforward to me without a lot more discussions. Number three, required STR listing to include a license number. To me, that one seemed pretty clear cut.
But Douglas, I know this was on, when I was on the planning commission, we had this on and pulled it off for some reason and I, but I knew.
Desiree's taking great glee in this because she's advocated for this for years.
Nobody wants to listen to me.
But I knew, what I remember and you would know better, it seemed like the big platforms, VRBO and Airbnb at the time, didn't have functionality or ease with which you could add a license number. That's changed certainly for them. I think some of our local management companies might have to pay a dollar to reprogram whatever platform they're using to feed this in, but do you remember anything else?
Yeah, that, well, that was it. That, plus the, at the time, those systems weren't using, it wasn't a matching tool for them, so there wasn't a huge benefit to including it. Rental scape has told us that it is a matching tool for them and it would benefit them and make their work more accurate and easier. So I think that's the primary, I think it's, it's our current provider has indicated to us that yes, if we knew that, we could pretty easily match the owners and the licenses together. So that's the primary reason.
I think we should do this one.
And then the fourth one, oh, sorry, Scott.
No, I was going to say, do we even need to ordinance that one? That one seems like it's an administrative change. We just vote on it and maybe I missed that when I walked out.
We do need that as, you know, if we were going to ticket somebody, force somebody to do it, we would need.
Yep.
I need some teeth.
So number four, any feedback on number four?
Causes me great agita.
Yeah, that was the, to me, one and four were, were the most kind of meaningful and, and I think everybody probably understands the logic of having the owner onsite. Again, the city of Charleston only wants you to do it that way. I would say that the way our ordinances are kind of crafted, they're just not built with this in mind. We, we don't allow ADUs, we don't allow second kitchens, we don't allow living space and accessory. I'm sorry, accessory dwelling units, which is very, I mean, it's a very common, most cities are kind of going this way to, to allow, you know, denser development. You don't have to go into, you can get more people on, on less area, so they're kind of going this way, but our ordinances just aren't, they've never been that way and I think we're unique in that we have, our ordinances are pretty well written to keep it to one group at each property. So I understand the logic, but I would say it, it does kind of, it's in contrast to the rest of the, the code.
Yeah, and just real quick, I mean, to me, this goes completely counter to all the other conversations we've been having a year plus. If we're worried about traffic and trash and volume and every, I mean, this multiplies it significantly potentially, but Jan?
Okay, yeah, I have some questions about that too. I understand that originally this was to, to prohibit rooming houses on the island is why they, they originally passed this, you know, in the 1950s or something like that. I also have a friend who said, well, she'd like to rent a room in her house because she's, she's a widow and got plenty of room and stuff, but she can't today. So this would be just for permanent residents?
Correct.
So, okay, so anybody, even a, somebody with a second home, they couldn't, they would have to be present, so, so that would eliminate that, okay.
And I think that was the, that was the sentiment that led them to including that recommendation. It's residents who want a little more flexibility, for whatever reason, they have additional space, they're going to make the visitors behave, they're going to deal with the, you know, whatever issues come from within their house, they're going to deal with it better than somebody who's not on site.
Okay, and these are short term rentals, so this is not like somebody wants a roommate and?
Yeah, that's correct. A short term rental would be anything less than three months, so like a summer rental would, would fall under this.
Okay.
If it was longer term, that's already allowed.
Okay.
Would it be any different if it were one versus many? I'm just, I maybe, maybe we asked the planning commission, yeah, I mean, one at a time versus many, and maybe that's a question for the planning commission.
They said only one room is what it says.
Oh, was it? Only one single room at a time?
Correct.
So it wasn't like you could have five bedrooms and run out to five rooms?
That's correct. It would just be one, one room in your house.
And, and also keep in mind, this is one that's very difficult to enforce as well. So, you know, just enforcement is definitely one of the challenges that we're trying to address by reviewing some of our policies and keeping it.
Let's get the planning commission.
Simple would be important.
Can I make one more? Maybe suggestion is if we're, if, if everybody here kind of agrees that maybe number three is more of an administrative one, is it possible to unhook that and put that in the, in the process lane as opposed to hitching the wagon to the other three? Because it might be a long time before any of the other three make any movement. I'm just suggesting that.
Yeah. One other suggestion when it comes to the, the code, it's three, it was three strikes or five strikes that we were talking about before, perhaps that we have the planning commission do major and minor strikes. I mean, I, you know, having your garbage can roll out cause you to lose your license, I mean, how egregious would it have to be? It's the kind of thing that I think we've got major violations and minor and maybe they could define those a little bit better for us, might be easier.
Much more to come on this violation. We're really focused on these four items.
Okay.
Scott, I mean, Rusty, sorry.
Yeah, just, on, on number four there, do, that, that, that idea came from Charleston, city of Charleston, correct?
Correct.
Do we know, it'd probably be very helpful to find this out, I mean, what, what kind of controls or stipulations are in place in regards to, you know, liability insurance? I mean, is there anything like that that would be problematic if people just start renting out a room in their home that would impact the city?
We've had a little bit of kind of internal strife about the building codes and how if you were to build a, a rooming home, rooming house in accordance with today's building codes, it would have to have fire separations, it would have to have, and so the houses aren't really designed to a code that's, so we have a little bit of.
It has to be ADA compliant and all of that too, right? Or not?
No, no, it wouldn't have to be ADA compliant, but I think the building codes could cause some issue to that same point as to how, it's a little bit of a square peg for us. So we would need to, you know, that would be part of the, part of the ordinance crafting as to how to, how to make the two mesh or existing housing stock in this provision, how to do that. And I don't know how, I don't think the city of Charleston directly deals with that.
This is the only rentals they allow, right?
Downtown, that's correct.
In certain areas of the city, it's only if the owner is present.
That's correct.
And in some areas as well.
Well, that's the, you have the VRBO, but in the, in the historic area, I mean, a lot of those houses have appendages where, you know, the owner could be in the big house in residence and run out the back.
Contemplate that.
I mean, it's just a different way to do rentals and to your point, I mean, our code's not there. I mean, I, again, my personal opinion, I don't even think we entertain this one, but that's just me.
I agree. Charleston allows long-term rentals though, right?
Yes.
John, you said agree.
I, I agree. I don't think we should mess with this.
Other?
So do we want to strike four, hold, pull three out?
Implement faster.
And to just kind of fast track and then have the planning commission in to really focus on?
One.
One and, one and two? And two, I think, sounds like that might be more staff just kind of fine tuning the gray areas where it's a condo and it's also done through a hotel. But I think I'm hearing the most, most of the concern with two, well, you'll, you'll talk to them about, about how that would impact.
And we'll, we'll make an invitation to the planning commission for your next workshop in September.
You want to make that a long meeting, your next workshop? Or do you want to do a standalone?
Or we can do a special meeting. We can, we can work on that.
Specific. Douglas, that, give you?
Yep, that's perfect, thank you.
Thank you for leading the planning commission through that and getting that back to us. Next item two, discussion of initiatives being pursued with Explore Charleston with the city's 30% of state accommodations tax revenue for tourism promotion. Just by way of quick background, remember we started these conversations with our lobbyists and with CVB, Explore Charleston, looking at ways to alternative uses of our 30% money. Conversations with our lobbyists didn't get us the end result we needed and again, you recall that 30% is a required state law that has to go towards tourism promotion. So after our lobbyist conversations didn't really take us down a path, we started conversations with CVB, Explore Charleston to look at different ways that we could partner and use some of the 30% for island specific items. In conversations with them over a few months, we targeted two projects that you see identified on the agenda, roughly $80,000 to be used out of the 30% that would typically go towards tourism management. And recall also they're paying, ongoing paying for part of our PR tourism staff position out of the 30% as well. So I think we've made some pretty decent progress with redirecting some of the 30% money, if you will, from tourism management to some other items. So these two projects we have already talked about but are getting ready to put into action are $30,000 for the tourism management plan and in your packet, there's a one pager that Desiree and Chandra put together for us and then $50,000 for a walkability study on the island. So Desiree, if you don't mind, just update on the two projects and kind of where we are in next steps, if you will.
Yes, absolutely. So I'll just walk through the community enrichment plan as we have it drafted so far. This is modeled after very similar process that the city of Charleston has, has gone through for many, many years and is updating currently with the same group, the same partners. We think that it would be a valuable exercise for the city to pursue. The, 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 the foundation of this plan is significant community input and this is going to be, this is going to look like surveys and large listening sessions that are going to be scheduled starting in the fall. The, the first step will be the community survey that's being drafted now, we'll circulate that with council once we, once we have it. The goal would be to have that community survey out by November and start gathering data. The large listening sessions have not yet been scheduled, but it's part of, that and focus groups is, is going to be part of the process. The second step after we start collecting data from the community about what tourism management looked like for, for à la Palms, it will be forming a committee made up of residents, business owners, just stakeholders that, that, that make up our, our community when it comes to tourism and, and, and livability as well. The committee then will be tasked with developing recommendations to bring to council for tourism management and livability and facilitate that conversation with, with, with the community and with council. It has been suggested that a, an avenue to form this committee is for each member of council to nominate one or two people so that everybody has an opportunity to, to identify stakeholders that we think are important, that we need to hear. We'll articulate a plan before you all, as we, as we move along next month, I'm sorry, next month. But that is a path that everybody will have an opportunity to appoint and recommend somebody to form the committee. The committee would need to be approved by council, so just keep that in mind, that is an option. And then again, this, this committee would be using all of the input, all of the insight and the assistance of tourism management experts as long as, as well as residents in developing a list of recommendations. So this is meant to be a very comprehensive plan that will hopefully, just very similar to our strategic plan, will, will guide policy and action when it comes to managing livability and, and tourism specific activities. and tourism-specific activities.
Jimmy. Jimmy, real quick.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to let Desiree finish before I had a comment.
No, that's all I had on the community enrichment plan. I was going to go to the walkability study, but I can take any questions.
I was going to ask, is this an ad hoc committee or just a committee that would be in place going forward?
No, I mean, the way that it's been worked in other communities is just a community specific for this purpose.
Okay. And we're talking about residents only, or when we say stakeholders and various community members, would that be people who have business interests on the island that may live elsewhere?
The recommendation is that it's a diverse group of people who have interest in the community as well as residents.
Well, I'll bring it up now, but there's been a discussion from some residents, this has been talked about before, but I promised I'd bring this up, and to, the possibility of discussing an alternative DMO for investing part of the 30% funds. Citizens are asking me about that, and I would just like to get the feelings from, and discussion from other council members.
Yeah, and I think we, two things real quick along that. Desiree and I talked about kind of having a postseason debrief, if you will, from CVB, you know, kind of looking at occupancy rates and average room rates and programs that they put in place, IOP-specific, so maybe that's a September kind of a postseason with them to have that conversation. You know, and I think there we can ask some of the effectiveness and get some metrics, and our ATAX Advisory Committee has done a good job for tweaking the financials and tweaking the metrics and making sure we're having good accountability. So one, I think we'll bring, plan on bringing CVB in September kind of timeframe, and then also have our attorney address again, you know, what state law says and what, what our options are or aren't.
That'd be very informative.
So I think we talked about doing that, just kind of postseason, let them kind of wrap up the summer season, summer session.
And they are required to come back to the city in the fall and present their report on their activities on behalf of the city for the 30%, and that usually happens September, October. In the past, they presented to the ATAX Advisory Committee alone, but I think there's value in certainly having that presentation at the workshop.
Yeah, Scott first.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'd like a little bit more information on what this enrichment plan is going to do for us. I know we've got a strategic plan, which you mentioned, we've got our comprehensive plan, we've got our beach management plans, we've got a lot of plans, and I think, you know, on paper, this looks like something that's interesting. You mentioned that it's been done with Charleston and maybe some others. Is it possible to provide the council with what an output looks like? Because I'm, I'm just kind of at a loss as to where we're going with this and what the expectation or the objectives in the final outcome would be. I'm, you know, I'm not for it or against it, it just would be helpful to me to learn a little bit more about what is the defined objective of the output. I think Rusty or somebody made the comment about who are the participants, talking about listening sessions again, how would those be conducted? You know, I think, I'd like to have a lot more detail about how we're going to walk through this process and what the expected output is before we embark upon, you know, nominating people for something that I'm not clear on what the output is. The other thing, and I think to Councilman Ward's point, you know, the 30% objective, I think for us, and I think it would be a great conversation with CVB to have, is that I think we were trying to take a, you know, one, what is now a 1.1, 1.2 million dollar bucket of spend that has grown, it's doubled over the last five years or so, and help us find ways, as this small community contributing that much money, are there ways to maybe work with CVB to divert them, some of that money on the island, or keep some of that money on the island for more tangible infrastructure projects? You know, do we really need to, as an island, spend $100,000 a month on promotion? Probably not, but I do understand the reality of the legislation. So if there's a way maybe we can work with CVB to help maybe retain some of those funds on the island and divert it to infrastructure such as beach walks or the Waterway Boulevard bike path, you know, I'm looking for ways to, you know, invest this money in more tangible things for the island.
Jan?
Okay. And a follow-up to what Councilman Ward said as well, could we address his question when we're in the tourism management part of the committee that's formed up and they investigate third-party use as part of whether they would recommend it or not for us? And how, you know, whether it's feasible and how they, we might use it.
Rusty.
Thank you. Well, we've had a lot of conversations over the last two years about our DMO and the And really, I give a lot of credit to the ATAX Advisory Committee, the sitting committee we have now, in opening CVB's eyes to the situation where we had really a lack of accountability. We didn't know where the dollars were going, there was nothing specific about it, and I look at all these meetings, and the CVB, I think for the last year, give or take a month or two, whatever, they've been working very closely with the ATAX Advisory Committee, and they've even been getting complimentary remarks from the ATAX Advisory Committee. You know, the same group that in the past had asked them for more accountability has now seemed to, if I can believe what I'm seeing, are giving them kudos for coming to the table with some creative ideas and doing some things regarding budget, budgeting accountability of the dollars that are spent targeting Isle of Palms and development of more programs to target more of a quality visit from visitors, you know, spending more while they're here, not necessarily larger numbers coming onto the island, but spending more while they're here and while they're staying on the island. You know, in the past, it had been a struggle to even get their budget, I'm talking about CVB's budget, approved through the ATAX Advisory Committee, and they got that approved this past couple of months unanimously, and also came right on the council, and we approved it unanimously as well. We have Chandra on board here, which is a great addition that is being in all or partly furnished by CVB. And I think with the walkability study, I think with the tourism management
Plan?
Plan that they're putting in place right here, I think we're off to a good start. We had an ATAX Advisory Task Force also that spun out of some of the conversations that were had through the ATAX Advisory Committee, appointed by this council, approved unanimously, we had several meetings. That task force came back to this council with three ideas, three recommendations. Number one, require more spending and budget accountability from the CVB on how they spend the 30% that's passed along to them each year because they are so DMO at this point. And that's being done, that's, we're making progress there. We got, number two, we encourage the city to support the, what was then the very new Chamber of Commerce in hopes of them someday becoming maybe an additional DMO that we could, you know, take some of the money, the 30%, and just funnel off to them so that they could do more Isle of Palm specific initiatives as well. And I would, I would hope that if we put a task force together, we're talking businesses, that the Chamber of Commerce would have a key part in being a part of this committee we're talking about. And then number three, and Mayor touched on this, we recommended the city continue to advocate for changes at the state legislative level to lower the 30% rate and or cap the ATAX dollars. And of course, that hasn't really gotten us anywhere at this point, you know, that's a long-term effort, so who knows if that will, will play out or not. But, I mean, it seems to me that we're moving in the right direction, and I think that we ought to take, take a look at these initiatives, and instead of us leaping to maybe some conclusion that we ought to just go out, take the folly beach model or the Myrtle Beach model and create a new DMO, I think at this point is very premature because of the progress we're making. And, you know, that's my spiel.
Desiree, real quick, Scott, to your comment, I think you provided the Charleston plan as an example, we can reroute that, because I, Scott, to your point, it is easier to see a tangible end result of kind of a think, take, thought, and you pull in, if we're going to bring residents and business owners and council potentially together, obviously needs to be a good end result, so we can reroute that if you don't mind.
Sure.
And then once you do the walkability study, just kind of update, quick update on where we are there.
So on the walkability study, the goal would be to have, to look at the connectivity, accessibility, just the closeness of key destinations on the island to make sure that we are providing a more livable and sustainable environment. That is what the goal of this study would be, identifying where new infrastructure or needs to, needs to be implemented or existing infrastructure that could be enhanced to promote walkability, and walkability is much more than just crosswalks and sidewalks, it's a very broad look at connecting, connecting people, connecting pedestrians, connecting golf carts and bicycles, so all these different modes of transportation island-wide. This sort of stemmed from an ongoing effort from the staff every year at looking at places where we can add sidewalks by using county funds. We felt like a plan that we could use to maybe in the next five, 10 years, we can implement by making, by making progress. So that's what the goal of this plan is, the CVB has budgeted $50,000 for this endeavor. This is something that's going to be driven and managed by the city, so we will issue a request for proposals from firms, we will engage a firm to do this work, and will be reimbursed by the CVB. So this is something that's going to be completely driven by the city and from beginning to end. So I think that that's a good, a good project to pursue, and we'll have tangible recommendations for, for infrastructure island-wide. And it'll include, you know, working with DOT, most of our streets are owned by DOT, so it is, it is a comprehensive look at what walkability looks like for the island. We have, this is another project on our list, we anticipate by the next, within the next two months, be able to complete a request for proposals and start pursuing firms that we can engage for this process.
Yeah. When we get to the capital projects update, a lot of balls in the air.
Yes, sir.
Right away. John?
Yeah, I, I think this is great, I support that study wholeheartedly. I guess getting backtracking a little bit, the crux of the issue, I don't believe is that we're, how CVB is currently using the money. I think the fact is, is that most people believe that it's legislated that they get over 1.2 million or whatever it is of our money, and that if we were, without that legislation, if we were looking how to invest taxpayer money, I don't think we'd be sending a million dollars to the CVB for advertising. So the challenge, I think, is, is of course, the task force came up with the third one is to get that changed, but in the meantime, is how can we use part of that 30% in agreement with, with CVB on things like an extension of the study, how to implement some of that every year?
Absolutely.
And I think those discussions, I think, are well worthwhile to have with them. I don't think we're looking at taking away all of CVB's money, I think what, part of what they do is extremely valuable, but part of it is frankly just a waste of taxpayer money that we're sending there for as far as the Isle of Palm residents go. And I think that the discussion, I think they'd be open to the discussions, I think there's creative ways, other communities are spending money, my understanding, on other things in advertising, I know kind of what the lawyers have said in the past, but other communities around the state are continuing to spend the 30% money on other things in promotion and advertising. So I would encourage us, I think Scott or Phillip, you said that we should have those discussions and open them up, I think we should, because it could be a big payback for us.
Yeah, and I, John, I completely agree, and I think, you know, we have found in those conversations so far to get, you know, to this 80,000 plus what we're sharing on Chandra, with her salary partly paid by CVB, you know, I mean, I feel like we're light years ahead, you know, from where we've been, and I think we've found a willing partner to continue to have these conversations, and I think to your and Scott's comment, you know, not to commit them to anything, but, you know, the study is just the first piece. I mean, there needs to be asphalt concrete on the ground at some point to show some benefit of that, completely agree with that. Good?
Yep.
Thank you all, good conversation. Nothing for environmental, next item, public services. We've got Desiree, it's kind of you and Chief O'Neal show, if y'all want to take these next three items.
I'll take on approval of mutual benefit and use agreement with Ashford for emergency debris removal services. So the city is part of the Charleston, is part of the Charleston County Emergency Debris Removal Contract. When we have a storm, a named storm, the county will activate that contract and assign resources to the city based on our need. This would be an insurance policy that would allow the city to activate this same contract for the city in the event that we have a storm, but it's not a named storm and an emergency disaster has not been declared, which is the, the components that would trigger the Charleston County activating this contract, which we're a part of. You all recall last year, we had a storm, the emergency declaration did not come until several weeks after the event, so during that time, we were conducting debris removal by ourselves, we ended up hiring a contractor to assist our staff in collecting debris. This would allow us to be able to engage that same contractor that the county has already bid and procured and selected, they would be able to, we would be able to activate them ourselves, and we would be responsible for paying that contractor in the event that we do not, are eligible to receive FEMA assistance, but that's going to be a decision that we make in the moment. So this is just an insurance policy, all of the county municipalities participate in this agreement, there are some municipalities that, that have a much bigger in-house staff that can handle additional need by their own departments in-house. We, we struggle particularly when we have a storm, so this would be, just again, an insurance policy that they would be on standby and up to us to activate in the event that we need, and the county does not activate that contract on our behalf. So we're recommending approval, we're not asking for any vote now, this will come to the, to your council meeting, but this is something that we've been wanting to do, and I think it would be a good, again, insurance policy for the city.
Yeah, it'd be time and money well spent. Questions on that? Next item is discussion, discussion regarding Isle of Palms Fire Department joining mutual aid agreement with the Charleston Metro Marine Unit. Desiree or Chief?
Yes, I'll, Chief, I'll, I'll say a few words and you tell me if I'm missing anything. The Isle of Palms Fire Department is currently not a member of the Charleston Marine Metro Unit, the Police Department is. You all recall a couple of years ago when we entered into an agreement with the county for the Police Department to house and use the county boat for law enforcement purposes, we entered into that agreement. Our Fire Department already responds and provides aid to these agencies when requested, so it doesn't change anything operationally, just formalizes that relationship, but it also adds our Fire Department, they get a seat at the table when they're discussing training opportunities and being invited to training opportunities. So we're recommending approval, again, we'll put this in the council meeting for you all to vote on, but this is a pretty straightforward request.
Wasn't there supposed to be a boat in the water? Hadn't we talked about that at one point in time, having a boat at the marina that stayed in the water? Is that?
We, yes.
Is that the boat you're talking about, or is that?
So this would, the boat that I was talking about was the county, the sheriff's office, and I don't, do we keep that? We don't keep that at the marina. We cannot keep that, that one in the water, but we do have and have confirmed and been given a space at the marina on the water for our Fire Department boat. Has that been, is it on the water? Our Fire, your boat?
It will be as soon as bottomated.
Okay.
Bottomated this week, but we do have the slip ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, next item is report of newly approved policy on residential sprinklers by the IOP Water and Sewer Commission. Desiree or Chief, either one?
I'll let Douglas kind of just give you a brief update on, on what this is, this is the first time you're, we're talking about this, so just wanted to give some context, and Douglas and the chief have been working on this for the past several months, and I think it's really great news that we want to share with you all.
And again, Chief, if I missed any of this, please correct me where I'm wrong, but by way of background, the Isle of Palms Water and Sewer Commission has historically not allowed what are called dual-purpose or interconnected sprinkler lines. They have required that if a homeowner wanted to install a sprinkler, they would, they would install a separate tap, a separate water line, and completely tap, a separate water line, and, and completely hold that sprinkler system independent of the, of the regular plumbing lines in the house. They have done this, they say, from concern of liability, where if they go and they, I'm sorry, they have not allowed dual purpose systems, which are systems that basically have a, a sprinkler head plumbed off of an, an existing water line and come up to the roof. They have not allowed those systems because of a concern of liability. They turn off the water for non-payment. The house burns down and somebody would say, well, you, you turned off my sprinkler system. So the Fire Department became aware of other communities, local communities allowing these type systems. They're fairly easy to install. They reduce a lot of cost. And they felt like the Water and Sewer Commission's policy of not allowing them was keeping people from adding sprinklers where they might otherwise do that. So they did a tremendous job in, in collecting information, providing that information to the Water and Sewer Commission, showing what other communities are doing, and, and speaking to them about the importance of sprinklers in these new homes, and eventually convinced them that, that the benefit of allowing these systems outweighed the concern of liability. And that led them this month to, or I guess it would have been last month, to adopting a new policy that would allow these type systems. So I think that's a, a big step forward for them. We hope that that will lead to more sprinkler systems and more sprinkler systems would lead to safer housing stock. So we're, we're very happy for them to have done that. Anything, Chief, I missed? I think you told me that, is it true that never has somebody died in a fire in a house that sprinkled?
That's correct.
It's never happened. So if you, if you add a sprinkler to your house, you will not burn up at night.
Not, not.
It's never happened. Knock on wood.
Well, would that have any bearing or would it help us with our overall insurance rate?
I don't know that it would.
Probably that individual house.
Typically, if you have a sprinkler system in your home.
It does.
I'm talking about the, I know that. I'm talking about the.
The ISO rate, yeah. I don't think we, so we do participate in a.
I think what's going, ISO.
ISO rating. We are a class one. I don't know that it would, I don't think you can get any better than a class one. I don't know if it would have any impact. Do you know?
Correct. You cannot improve beyond a class one. But that's a good question. I can find that information out. It may positively affect that rating.
Maybe we get a class one plus?
Yeah, A plus.
A plus?
Right above.
Negative one.
Point five?
Chief and Douglas, thank you all for your work on this. I know it was not easy getting, getting that one across the finish line. So Chief, thank you for.
Fire Marshal Stafford was instrumental.
No, a good point. Yeah.
Did a great job.
Desiree, anything else on that one?
Yes, sir.
Next item is personnel, appointment of Jeff Swain, Captain Jeff Swain to the grievance committee. This is a replacement for Norma Jeans. This is administrative item and we'll approve that at our council meeting in a couple of weeks. Desiree, anything?
Yeah.
Next item, E, discussion of acceptance of drain easement between 16 and 18, 25th Avenue. Douglas?
Yes, I'll give you some background here. This is an area on 25th Avenue that has always had a, a ditch that connected a roadside system to a system behind houses. We've been maintaining it. We've been treating it as though it's part of our system. We learned as a result of a new house being built next door that we did not have an easement in place. So we were a little bit of a loss of being able to control what was done there. If we had had an easement, we could have kind of dictated how that easement was used. But both owners agree that they want that easement there. They see the benefit of the city maintaining it as we've always done. I think technically it would be improper for us to continue maintaining a ditch that we don't have an easement for. So we have, we have engaged a surveyor to draw up a survey that would create that easement. There's also an easement agreement. Both owners are in the process of executing their dedication of that easement. But part of the process includes the city accepting it. So we would be asking that you accept that easement. If, if and when that was done, the next steps would be to record the documentation that the, with the county. And then we would have an easement. We would continue maintenance as we always have. Kind of a housekeeping item for us.
But it'll, it'll require a formal vote.
Yep.
Next session. Thank you, Douglas.
Thank you.
Next item is financial review in your package. You've got the financial statements. This is first month of our fiscal year. So Deborah, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Council, good evening.
Good evening.
As the mayor has stated, this is our first month of the fiscal year and we're off to a good start. We total for all funds is up 4% over budget or compared to budget. We're at 4%. And total expenditure for all funds is 5%. For the general fund, we're at 4% for revenue and 7% for expenditures. And comparable to last year, for expenditures, we are 99% like right, right, exactly what, where we were last year. The majority of the revenue for both, for all funds and the general fund is coming from interest expense, interest income, which is 5.42% on our cash balance, which we have a healthy cash balance of about, I'm sorry, I'm on the next slide. Is someone changing the slides?
Amy, next slide.
It's going. Just thank her.
Okay. So we have a healthy cash balance of total of about $39 million. And of that, we're receiving interest on 38 of that. I'm, I'm pretty much a total of 39 million. The truest balance is 837,000. And of course, we have restricted cash of 17,000, which is the tourism, I'm sorry, which is the tourism fund and the beach preservation fund. And there's some other restricted cash in there as well. As Desiree said earlier, much of the revenue we received this month has been accrued back to 2023, FY23, because we're still working on June last year. Also, we're preparing the information for the auditors as they will be here in September. The, the city also re, was, received the award notice of 161,000 for grant funds from FEMA, which was related to the debris cleanup for Hurricane Ian. And there is one correction on there as well, on where it says the general fund revenue is 27% ahead of July. It should be 2022, not 23, because we're in 23.
And, and just quickly, internally, we decided to deposit the grant from FEMA of the $160,000 to our disaster recovery. It covers, again, the debris removal contract we entered into last year and then some labor associated with our staff collecting debris. So we went ahead and deposited that in disaster recovery fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On to the tourism schedules. Number one. Okay, the muni tax, we are, nothing has changed. It's, we're still waiting on one more month to collect. So currently, we're still 7% above FY2022. For the State A, we actually did receive some funds this week. It's about $919,000. So with that receipt of revenue, we are at the 7%, or right at 7%, like we are on the muni tax increase over prior year. Dollar wise, we're, we're ahead, but percentage wise, we are starting to trend more as it was prior to, to COVID, pre-COVID. And then, and the, there's no new activity for city-county ATAX.
So Deborah, just real quick, the State A tax, we have the June payment and that's the 900 and whatever thousand.
That's correct. We just got it this week.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Compared to.
It just hasn't been reflected because it just came.
Compared to 886 or whatever.
Yes, sir.
After last year. Okay. Thank you.
And on the hospitality tax, we recognize, we, we, this one is done. We recognize one full year. We are 18% better than we are prior year. And the majority of that is because Morgan Creek Grill and Sweetgrass Inn have been operating for one full year. So that constitutes some of that income. For the beach preservation is the same as muni tax. And for local option tax, we still have two months to collect, which should be comparable to FY22. And finally, I just want to openly thank Debbie for all of her training and, and just taking the extra time to stay here and extend her retirement to assist me with my transition. That's all I have.
I would second that heartily. Debbie, thank you.
Debbie's official date is going to be the end of this month.
We're not talking about that.
Yeah.
Well, good job.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you, Deborah.
Good job.
Next item, a lot of items for procurement, typical in our first or second month of, of a new budget year. Most of these are budgeted, so I think we can fly through fairly quickly. Desiree, you want to take these?
All right. Item A, these are four vehicles that are budgeted for purchase this year for the Police Department. Three of those are replacement. They're part of our, uh, replacement cycle that we follow. Two of them are replacing 2016 Ford SUVs that have over 150,000 miles on them. The vehicle for the animal control officer is from 2018, but it has significant rust and framing issues. That's why it's slated to be replaced. And then number four, it's a new vehicle for a new code enforcement officer. Approval of replacement of six mobile data terminals and DTs. This, these are computers that are installed in our fire apparatus. And this is where they receive information from dispatch about the call that they're going to. Also need to be replaced. It's budgeted in our general fund. Item C, this is an approval of overhead fans for the apparatus bay at Fire Station One. This is a sole source contract. We've included a sole source justification. Big A fans is the only manufacturing source for this product that we need. It does include the, in the total cost of $65,000, does include electrical work, some seismic bracing, and the labor needed to, for the installation.
And this is Station One, and I think we've got budgeted for Station Two and 25, maybe?
That's correct. And next fiscal year will include one fan for Fire Station Two.
Given the size difference.
Did the budget, is the budget of 124 include two?
Um, no, the 124 is the bucket of money that we use for maintenance and miscellaneous.
I got you. All right. This is just 65 of them.
Right.
That's right. That's where it's being coded.
Yeah. Given the heat wave, how quickly can they get that installed?
Um, what's your justification for going sole source on this?
They are the only provider. They, they're the only manufacturer of that, of that. And the memo is included in the packet.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess speed is not going to be at the top of their list if I'm a sole source provider, but we'll move as fast as we can.
About six weeks.
And we're not approving until council meeting.
End of this month, yeah. Number D, this is just a report as the city's procurement, purchasing agent. I have to report expenditures that are emergency expenditures. You all recall, we had some debris issues with our debris collection service last month due to equipment failures and just an ongoing, an onslaught of just issues with rental equipment that was delivered in, and, and delivered in, by mistake. Anyway, we're back to normal. We have a rental with the correct rental equipment that we need in place. We are fixing our existing caterpillar that is used for debris removal. And you all recall, a couple of months ago, you approved a replacement for, and the purchase of a new piece of equipment that is expected to arrive in January. So in the meantime, we will keep our existing, um, equipment that has been repaired. We will keep an additional rental unit, just to provide some redundancy on, on debris operations. So the amount that we paid for, for assistance during that time when we had no equipment was $19,250. E, do you want me to just go, continue, Mayor?
Yes, sorry. Can I turn it over to you, Desiree? Oh, you're stuck.
E, approval of recommendation from the ATAX Committee of a grant of $5,000 for the VFW to repair their beach walkway. Y'all recall, the ATAX Committee has established a new process for the consideration of sponsorships and grants with the use of the 65,000, 65% of our State A tax funds. Earlier this year, they met and considered the applications that were received. Only two were received prior to the deadline. One of them were, was recommended for approval as soon as we start the fiscal year. So that's why it's before you all. There is another application that they heard from the Make-A-Wish Foundation about a special event that they're hosting in Wild Dunes. They requested additional information from the applicant, and that is expected within, by next month. So this is, the, the VFW, I think, is eager to get their work started. And we're, we're pushing this before you all for approval from, as recommended by the ATAX Committee.
Just had a quick question from a resident. Can we get some information on the ADA compliance of the, of that, or if it is ADA compliant, or does it need to be ADA compliant? I think from what I understand, that it's going, it's quite accessible. You know, I've, I've been down there quite a bit, and it is a very accessible access. It's a public access.
Yes.
I don't even know what the ADA requirements are. I don't know that it is ADA required. But it was just a question that was asked. So maybe we can just get that information.
I'll get that information and present it at the council meeting. Okay. And the item G, approval of a sole source contract in an amount of 135,000.
Do F.
Oh, dear Lord, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Approval of a change order to ATM in the amount of 48.6 for bidding and construction administration of the public dock rehabilitation project. Last year, on, in June, City Council approved, approved a, a contract to ATM for the design, engineering, and permitting of the renovations to the public dock. We specifically did not engage them for bidding and construction administration until we get to the point where we were ready to go take that step. So this is a proposal for you all to consider and approve at the end of the month so that we can get, we can get started and we can be ready to get, go through bidding and have ATM oversee the construction of that project. It's 48.6, as I indicated, and we anticipate being able, from a design standpoint, we will be ready to go out for bid in mid-September. We are making some calls to try to shake off some of these permits that we have not yet received. Any questions on that? Or do I keep going? All right. Approval of a sole source contract in an amount of 135,000 to National Fitness Court for an outdoor fitness court at the recreation center. I will ask Carrie to just give a very, is she here?
She's here.
To give a very, a quick overview of this project. And we also want to share with you all just a quick video of what this is. You know, you look at, you know, you hear outdoor fitness court. It's not until you actually see what we're talking about that, I think. Hopefully, we'll get everybody excited and signed up to workout over there.
Don't get carried.
We have good insurance.
So the outdoor fitness court is a, it's about 1,025 square feet, just square, 38 by 38. The actual fitness court is actually 32 by 32. So there's a six-foot walkway, ADA compliant walkway around the court. There are seven stations. There's a push, pull. I'm not going to get all these. Bend, core, squat, lunge, agility. Maybe I did. And so for the person who knows how to workout, they walk up to this, they know exactly what to do, which is great. The person who might not be familiar, they walk up. The person who might not be familiar, they walk up to this, totally overwhelmed. There's an app on the wall. They scan. And the app has eighteen stored workouts in it that the person can choose from. They change quarterly. There's also challenges that the person could do, and they can compete with other people and post their times or reps. And they're competing with other communities, colleges that have this fitness court. So it's just such an interactive, you know, thing to have. So the app also, once a year, gives the rec center the demographics and analytics of who's working out, who's doing the challenges, if it's, you know. So that's kind of nice as well.
So maybe we want to watch this, maybe the first two minutes. You can see it, and it's available on YouTube.
You're a great guy and all, but you're not big. There can't be a more humiliating sentence for a guy coming from a girl he just.
I don't think that is the video.
But it's interesting, nonetheless.
Get that off quick.
Family-friendly island.
Do you wanna just stop it, Amy? Amy, if you go.
Desiree is the top right.
Yeah, it's the top right. Maybe that, yes. So this is just an ad.
If you go to, if you go to the site for the, that national.
Amy, skip the ad. So you get the idea. It's a very interactive system, right, Carrie?
So what the court will allow us to do too is that we can program it as well. So it's gonna be super interactive for the participant just to come and work out, us to be able to program it. There are some challenges with police and fire where they can win badges back and forth between each other. Other communities are taking part of that.
Where is it?
So we are looking at outside of the softball field, along the fence line, underneath the trees. There's some trees out there and that. So it'll be directly across from the restrooms, the little dry ditch.
So it's gonna have some shade, which I think would be appreciated by folks.
Carrie looks great.
So this is a company, the National Fitness Court holds the rights to this equipment and this kind of activity. We've searched wide and far to see whether there is something comparable that would justify going off RFP. And Carrie has done some research, and a lot of communities have adopted this and implemented this. And essentially, it becomes a sole source just because they have the rights and.
They're just doing things a little bit differently with the app and the interactiveness of that. Also, the way the fitness court is laid out, it's twenty-eight people can work out simultaneously on this, which is a lot more than if you go a different route. So those are just kind of the, some of the things that make them different, kind of stand out.
Don't they? I think they already have a couple of million subscribers on this platform, yeah. Can, I just, I do have one question. What does the hundred and thirty-five cover? Because I'm, I don't know with our climate and everything, is there gonna be maintenance, repair, ongoing subscription fees?
With our climate, I'm sure there will be. Aiken has one, and I have talked to the gentleman in Aiken, and they actually have both fitness courts. They have this, and then they have a, just an outdoor that has the resistance. He has let me know that they've had very little maintenance issues with this court, whereas the resistance equipment they're fixing more often.
Like, is the average life of this whole unit, five years, ten years, four years?
I would have to look and see. I would have to look and see. There are a ton on the East Coast. Florida has a bunch. There's a ton on the West Coast. California has a bunch. So looking at the climate, so where they are, we kind of fit right in line with, you know, where they came from, where they started and established.
Are there subscription fees that go along with it, or ongoing operating costs or anything? Okay.
So it'll just be general maintenance once it's built, yeah.
Imagine it would be pretty much like the playground equipment. I mean, there's some metal stuff that's gonna end up rusting or.
That's right.
And will the, will the fire department have an extra EMS team to?
They usually respond pretty fast.
The city's FY twenty-four budget includes a hundred and sixty-five thousand for this. They provided a, they will offer a thirty thousand dollar credit to the city. But there will be an additional expense that will be covered within the budgeted amount of one sixty-five for the construction of the platform. That's not included. And Carrie, quickly, timeline for implementation?
So timeline, once approved, they will, we're gonna get started. They really want this done by the end of two thousand twenty-three. So we would get the equipment shipped, start on that concrete slab as soon as possible. There's a twenty-eight, thirty-day cure for the concrete slab, and then install, which takes, you know, five to seven days. So we're looking at the end of October, November. Depending on weather, of course.
I always put that caveat.
Carrie, what you're doing here, and I know what you presented to the public services team today around the dog park improvements and just significant upgrades. Thank you for leading that effort. Other questions? Desiree?
No, sir.
Carrie?
Thank you. Next, any other procurement stuff that, Desiree? I think that was the list. Next item is capital projects update. You'll see a greatly expanded list now that we're in our new fiscal year. Desiree, you want to?
Yes, I'm pulling it up just real quick.
Okay, on drainage, you've probably seen some activity and some crews working at the Thirty-Fifth Avenue Outfall. The, a, a crew became available to the contractor, so they sent them our way to complete that, that, that area. So they're installing the, the check valves, the trash racks, and the grates on the junction box, and that work should be completed really quick. I think we've already reported that we did some extra landscaping next to the, one of the properties adjacent to the, to the outfall. We're doing the same on the other side as well, so we'll be working on, on that with our landscaper. On the Thirty-Sixth Avenue Outfall, which is the second one, we are gearing up and getting ready to start mobilizing right after Labor Day weekend. There were some back and forth, for several months, reported that there was some back and forth between the manufacturer and the engineers on the final design of that, of that project. But that has been completed, and, and we believe we'll be on track to, to get that, to get that wrapped up pretty soon. Forty-first Avenue Outfall Project, as you all know, this is being funded by the South Carolina Office of Resilience. They issued the request for bids document last week, which we're really happy. We're keep, we're right on track where we wanted to be at this point. We will be opening, opening up bids at the end of this month and hopefully present a recommendation to score for, for their approval in selection of a contractor. On the comprehensive drainage master plan, we're meeting with the Davis and Floyd team to just update the executive summary and just final touches on the report, so, so that we can get that project completed and distributed to you all in the community and use that as a guide for planning future drainage projects. For the Waterway Boulevard Multi-Use Path Elevation Project, y'all know this is something that we have submitted a grant application for FEMA for the hazard mitigation grant program. They've allowed us to engage an engineering firm for certain engineering and permitting activities. We have to go through the procurement process for that, so we worked on that last, last week, and we'll be opening proposals next Friday. So for the public dock and rehabilitation greens, and the green space, we talked already about having to engage ATM for the bidding and the construction admin work. Like I said, we anticipate being ready for, for bid by mid-September and hoping that we get all permits in place before we do that. It's always very helpful for the contractor to have that before bidding a project. Also, need to agree and finalize the redesign for the parking layout on the north side of the boat ramp. We had a meeting today with the Public Services and Facilities Committee and, and discuss some options. And the decision was made to bring, bring the, the option that we discussed today to council for the, to, to, to your, your next workshop meeting for feedback, rather than bringing it back to committee, taking it over here, so that we can get some reaction about the direction and timeline. And hopefully, we can get a plan that not only the city, but the restaurant could also agree for that, for that redevelopment. Our, our goal would be to have something agreed to that we can add to the renovations to the public dock, effectuate the green space vision, and have the completion of the drainage outfall at Forty-first done at the same time. And all of those projects are, are geared up and, and, and expected to be starting very soon. So that's something that we need to, that we need to discuss and get some direction on. On the T-Dock repairs, our plan is to include the maintenance work as part of the public dock bidding process in September. So not a whole lot to update you on that until we, we, we go through the bidding process for, for the public dock. And then on the dredging, y'all recall, we have a grant from the state for dredging activities around the, at the marina. We, council approved a contract to ATM to pursue the permitting and design of this project. We met with them, had a kickoff meeting last month, and we are in the process of coordinating and scheduling a meeting, which will be held here with neighboring facilities that may want to join the city's permitting effort or just be aligned. So when we get, go out for bid, hopefully have some savings from the, from the contractor and have a vendor-only mobilized one. So we are extending this invitation to owners and HOAs around the area to help them identify whether they have a need, and if so, how we can take advantage of commonalities and efficiencies through that process. All right. Beach maintenance and access improvements, a quick update on the park, County Park Emergency Vehicle Access. We presented to the Public Safety Committee earlier this month a preliminary design of, of that project in coordination with the county. The county has provided additional comments to Davis and Floyd, who is designing that access path and that vehicle access path. And our goal would be to finalize that and, and be ready to go out for bid in November. Once we have a final design, we'll be presenting that to, to council for approval. And the county staff will also do the same with their commission for their approval. This is a project that we have included in our FY twenty-four budget for two hundred thousand dollars for the construction. So we'll know whether we're close or far once we go out for bid. Not, no, no update on the beach access path improvements from last month. We do have an update on the beach maintenance and restoration piece. Was expecting a proposal from Coastal Science and Engineering last week, but those folks are, are, have been really busy and unable to provide me a proposal for the long-term design, the design of the long, long-term, large offshore dredging project on the north side, and also the coordination on the Army Corps of Engineers project on the breach inlet. Hopefully, we can get that, get them engaged quickly, but we're moving along on the beach, it, breach inlet project with the Corps. And I'll give some details on that in a little bit. The minor dune restoration project between one fourteen and three oh four Ocean Boulevard, just giving you, giving you all an update and just a reminder, reminding of the timeline since this project was approved by council in June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. We received apartment from OCRM for this work end of June. We also received bids from multiple contractors for this work second week of July. This SCPRT grant that we, that we applied for, for fifty percent of the construction cost has been approved by the state. We just have to execute an agreement for that, for that work. And as you all know, easement agreements were developed by our attorneys and distributed to the property owners along the project area last Monday. So far, so there are twenty-one properties along that area between one fourteen and three oh four. Of those twenty-one, we have heard back from five that intend to execute the agreement and be part of the city's scope. Nine of those that do not anticipate, do not plan to execute an easement agreement with the city, but plan to do the work and pay for themselves, and seven who have not yet responded. And we have reached out to them for, for an update and just giving them the option. Amy, if you don't mind, just taking back, going back to that. Thank you. So I think we've, we've heard from property owners who have expressed some concerns about the need to enter into a permanent easement agreement with the city. We have been advised that that is what the city's position needs to be by our attorneys. It's an issue associated with using private, uh, public funds to construct a dune on public property. And, I'm sorry, on private property. The, the goal of the easement would be to allow the city to maintain it, repair it, and protect it, and, and, and prevent a property owner from eroding it or making any changes to the dune after it's been constructed by the city. We have been working for the past several weeks to try to find another solution that may be more practical. But what we're seeing across the board is consistent with what our attorneys are advising us. Other communities deal with the same issue with property owners who just don't feel comfortable granting permanent and perpetual easements to municipalities, and the option that is provided to them is, is doing the work themselves and paying for it. Therefore, it's private money being used for that purpose. Or if they are not responsive or do not want to sign an, an agreement and do not want to pay for it themselves, then they're just not included in the project and they are skipped, which, as you all know, we've heard from our coastal engineers essentially threatens the integrity of, of, of the, the health of the dune that we're trying to construct. But it seems like, you know, we've talked about the need of developing a consistent policy, and I, yeah. Councilmember Bogosian suggested this is something that the Administration Committee takes on, and I agree that this is something that needs to be addressed and codified. Other communities have codified, others have not. Some are a little wishy-washy, others are not. And a lot of the beaches in our state are managed by the Corps. Not a lot deal with this situation like, like we do. And the Corps is very consistent in requiring permanent and perpetual easements for the work that they do. And oftentimes, do not give municipalities even the option of having owners pay for it. They won't, they won't do a project unless they have a hundred percent of easements from, from properties.
Which begs the question, what happens, we, we should start planning for the bigger project that's coming up, because if there's people that don't sign a perpetual easement, and I, I'd still think I'd like to talk to Mac about this, because I really don't understand. It seems like the old dudes were on private property as well, the ones that got washed away. But there was still a right, I think there's other laws on the book that, that allow those dunes to be maintained by state through OCRM and other laws. So I, I'd just like to talk to Matt, because I think we need to start preparing for this larger beach restoration, and what happens if people don't sign it?
And that's, that's something that we've actually discussed with our coastal engineer on the breach inlet project with the Corps. It's a little bit different than other Corps projects, because the, the purpose of this project is for their navigational use. So they're a little bit, they have different, I guess, different requirements for that. In addition, the, the way that this project is being designed is, it, it, it looks like there were, there's going to be around four hundred thousand cubic yards of sand that is, that are gonna be deposited in, in our beach. Sullivan's Island is gonna be taking around a hundred and fifty thousand. But the way that they are placing it on our beach, it's going to be below the mean high water, so it's gonna be on the beach. And the purpose of that is for the water to clean out and, and fill, essentially, the sand for, for it to filter before being placed. So the Army Corps may not have a need to, or a requirement to us to secure it for them, to secure easements for them to do the work, because they're gonna be placing that sand below mean high water, and, which is not within the private property. But if we've heard Stephen indicate that his recommendation would be for the city to do, do a scraping project and mobilize this sand to not. to do, do a scraping project and mobilize this sand to not only create and, and create a more continuous dune north, south of Ninth, but also along the beach. So we're going to be facing the same, the same conundrum essentially and one of, you know, what, what we're planning on doing is just communicating, once we have a meeting with the Corps, we have a, a better understanding about timing to reaching out to all the owners below Ninth Avenue to, to go through this process again.
Yeah, there's a question about the difference between this project and ones in the past. And if I understand it correctly, the, the last time that they did a project like this, they had a named storm that was involved. And so it was kind of an emergency order. It was completely different than this project and where there isn't any named storm. Would you, would you explain?
Yes.
A little more in detail what I'm talking about?
I'll show Cam. The city did a scraping project in 2016 and 2017 and those two projects were done under an emergency order right after a hurricane when, you know, hurricane came, destroyed the, destroyed the dunes and a disaster had been declared by the state. It's different because in that time it was just a scraping project. This time we're trucking in sand, so the source is different and it was done under an emergency order. This work is being done under a general permit. None of the property so far meet the emergency threshold by the state. I would, I would say though, that our engineers would have, would have advised that the city should have had a, a construction easement for that project as well. I think it's, you know, they believe it's, it's what puts this, puts the city in the best position and protects the city in the long term. So I can only speak to the conditions that were in place in 2016 and 2017 when that happened.
Right.
When we've done larger projects and while dunes, those, well, the city did secure agreements with the individual property owners. The difference is some of the properties down that end, their property line don't extend to mean high water like it does on this end. So that is another nuance that's just different from, from the north side.
Right, thank you.
Rusty and Scott.
Okay, thank you. So almost half are not going to go with an easement at all. They're going to pay for the sand scraping themselves.
That's right.
Nine of them.
And they would be doing that work under the city's permit? Y'all recall that was an option, that the city pursue the permit.
Right, with the Bobcat and $3,000 approximately that each one would pay to scrape some sand up.
That was scraping. This is trucking, they're still trucking in sand.
Same difference really. So five, the five that will, that would take the easement, I mean, have they already signed that agreement?
We've received two and the other three, I believe, have, they've indicated they're, it's in either on the way or they're, they plan to.
Right.
To bring it to the city.
And the seven that haven't responded, if they choose not to go with it at all, that's, if I remember with the coastal science and engineering, I mean, that could also affect some, some of the stability of the sand that's placed at adjoining properties also, right?
It is certainly not ideal to have a break in the dune. We have very limited options for those people that, that don't elect to either pay for it themselves or join the city's project by essentially providing a permanent easement for that work. We don't know, I mean, we will, we will be able, once we hear back from everybody, everybody will be able to map the project and work with the contractor in it and try to minimize any potential impacts of what we call creating a bathtub when you skip over, over a property.
Yeah, my question was on the seven, are there any indications that they're, they're going to, they're not going to respond at all or you think they're, they're just haven't been reached yet or contacted?
I don't, I don't know. We've reached out to them again by multiple ways. We don't know if they, I mean, we sent the, the original easement last Monday, so it's been a week and maybe that they just haven't gotten to it.
Now, this was by email or call or?
Email. And mail.
I mean, has anybody reached, like tried to call them or reach out to them?
Knock on their door.
They're not full-time residents.
Yeah, well, and the only, where I'm going is if we've only got seven outstanding, if we can get, if we can try to proactively figure it out, a way to contact and get an answer one way or the other, if they're either, they're either going to be a no or they're going to hopefully pay, decide to pay for themselves on that end of the island, then would you have a continuous project, contiguous project that then you're just splitting up the money? And I'm guessing that if they're, if they're funding it alone, we're not going to get matching dollars. It has to be a city, is that how that works? So they'd be paying twice the, twice the, the fee.
Not, not twice, they would be paying the full, the full.
They'd be paying the full fee, whereas the city would be only paying half and then we'd get matching for the other half.
That's correct.
So maybe the, yeah, I guess the action is get those seven chased down.
Yeah. All right, what else? Fire Department Exhaust Systems, Fire Station One and Two, we have a bid opening end of August. City Hall renovation, we issued a request for qualifications. We're pursuing this very similar to the process we did for the public safety building renovation, which was a design build, a very efficient way of bidding construction projects where you, you engage the designer and the, the architect, the designer and the construction vendor together. We had really good experience with that, with public safety, the public safety building renovation and Fire Station One. So we're pursuing that. We'll, we'll get qualifications back by mid-August and then those folks that are determined to be qualified will be invited to present a proposal to the city. I'm going to skip the outdoor fitness court. We've talked about that already. Dog park improvements. It seems like the only item that we're probably going to require to procure competitively is the fence replacement. We're looking at a commercial-grade galvanized steel, black vinyl coating fence, which will look really nice. If you are interested in some of the details about the dog park, the Public Services and Facilities Committee had a, received a presentation from, from Carrie earlier today. Really exciting stuff. Undergrounding power lines, the mid energy and pipe engineering are almost closed, almost complete with the design of the 14th Avenue project. This is undergrounding that entire section of road and utility lines. We anticipate a final design by the end of this month that we'll be able, that we'll be able to use to refine our cost, construction estimates. That would need to come back to council because we are paying 50% of those construction costs for, for approval. And the Mid Energy has conducted a couple of onsite meetings at 41st Avenue to identify some commonalities that we can piggyback on as part of the drainage project that is starting later this year to try to minimize the, how many times we go out and dig to install conduit. And then no, no update on SEDOT's work on the Palm Boulevard concepts. Still waiting on a timeline there. I do know that they're, that they're working on it with our KNK. I think there were some contract changes that needed to happen. So there was some administrative work that, that they were working on before continuing on, on this path, but we anticipate by this fall to, to get a, a very similar process as we did for the, for the connector, presenting options to the city and then getting community feedback. I think that's all. That's enough, I'm telling you.
Couple hours in, but if we didn't pause and think about the number of projects that our staff is pulling off, it's pretty incredible. So thank you all for doing that. I mean, we've typically worked on a drainage project or a something else, but this is a lot, so thank you for your efforts.
I'd like to also say thank you too for all the grants you have gotten for a lot of this work.
Great.
There was someone that asked about what we were doing about getting grants for the city on one of the social media sites and I started listing just the ones I could remember off the top of my head. It was pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Next item, legislative report, nothing there since they're out of session until January, nothing from miscellaneous, there being no further business?
Rusty.
Most should adjourn. Second.